Williams, District Attorney, Councilperson, Fisher, man. Uh, anyway, uh, so last week I was working on, uh, getting some of the, uh, rods taken care of for fishing because they were snapping everyone's hands. Uh, the person I was working with on the federal level, uh, is no longer there and the person above them struck it down. So fishing's gonna be borked for a while. That's all I can say. Like, we're just gonna have to deal with these breaking rods and I don't know why. And that's all. I have nothing else unfortunately.
Yeah, roadmap for the, before the end of your term?
Uh, yeah, I would, uh, really like to get something like that pushed through and done because right now there's a whole swath of, of, of a profession on this island that just can't be done because you will lose money if you attempt it. Um, if you do it for the love of it, which is, is fine, but, uh, I didn't start it doing fishing for the love of it. I needed to make a living in this island and it was one of the easy ways to do that when I first got here and that's no longer an option. Um, so I would really, I'm really still pushing that. Uh, I'm probably not gonna get anywhere, but I gotta manage.
Do you have any more avenues to look into to make sure your goals are met?
Uh, no, because the, there, there's no, um, doing something basically to just kind of push something through and hopefully it takes, it's, there's one person who can stop me and, uh, it has been stopped by that person.
Not it.
Not yet, not, 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 not that guy. Not even this guy here.
Would it be helpful if, if we at least passed a, a bill?
No. It would, it would be very symbolic of us, but, uh, that symbol would just, uh, crush under the gaze of, uh, of hatred and, uh, disdain, so.
I feel that on me constantly.
Yeah, is it, is it an issue at the back of your head?
Yeah, it's when Vinnie's here. I always feel it.
But he's not standing behind you. Then why is it at the back of your head then?
No further questions.
No, yep, alright. Uh, any questions for council member?
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Back up to the podium?
Uh, yes, 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 sir.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, uh, yeah, it's appreciated. Thank you for your time, sir.
Alright. Alright. Mr. King. The floor is yours.
Hey, I have a statement I would like to make.
Alright, put the statement on record.
Uh, Rad Rizzo is a really cool gal and, uh, Boblin King.
Your position?
Uh, City Councilor, Grand Poobah of the Adventurers Guild, Warrior, Father, Brother, and Scholar.
Thank you. And for the record, do you currently hold all trademarks or venture and copyrights in this town?
I'm not, not certain, but I think I do, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Please go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Rad Rizzo is a really rad lady and deserves to be protected at all costs and never would I ever put her in harm physically or mentally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Allegedly. Um, also,
He also ripped over with a truck today.
Alright, alright, alright.
Allegedly.
We'll give you guys a chance to, to speak and question him, um,
Also, also, I, I have nothing to present and, uh, go Tigers!
Alright, go Tigers. Does anyone have any questions for the councilman? Um, step to the podium, you can ask any questions you like.
Gonna reach out to the citizenry. I heard, I heard somebody got run over?
I think Banner has something to say. Alright, state your name and your, and your statement.
Excuse me. Robert Banner, uh, Public Defense Office, how old?
How do you do, Robert?
Okay, Mr. Councilman King.
Yes, how can I help you, Banner?
Do you believe that it would be, eh, a form of vandalism to try to, eh, grab onto and climb up on helicopter blades to emergency vehicles?
I think that if someone intentionally did that, that would not be an act of vandalism. It would be more some sort of jamboree climbing experience, probably testing themselves for future climbing endeavors. You know, it would be quite dangerous and were they to bring harm to the helicopter, that would certainly be, uh, a form of vandalism if it was intentional. But were it unintentional, I would assume they would be still held liable for the cost, uh, like a car crash or something relatable to that. It certainly wouldn't be some form of vandalism.
Hmm. Uh, Councilman Williams, would you concur if that was vandalism or not? As the DA goes.
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on. This is not a courtroom. You're not here to question it for somebody used in court for, for some gain here. You can,
Not, not for.
This is not the time or place for that. If you want to bring that case to court, feel free to, and I know you're a lawyer, bring it to the docket, have the proper judge that is standing four people over to you handle that. But this is not the time or place. You wanna handle city business, then we will talk. Appreciate you, Banner. Thank you. Alright, moving on. Anyone have any questions? I shouldn't have said anything. Any questions, council member with city issues? Alright, moving over to Mr. Falco. You have the floor. Say again?
Excuse me. I've been waiting by the door the whole time.
Alright, you have the floor, Billy.
Council members and members of the public. My name is Billy,
Hey, there we go.
I, excuse me, my name is Billy Falco. I'm, I am a city councillor. I wear today a mock-up of a parachute. On or about November 4th, 1985, the city council passed the Power Legal Act, legalizing parachutes in the city. That act still sits in judicial limbo. I, today, am proposing a judicial transparency bill, providing the city council with, with visibility of the judicial decision-making and review process of any city council bills. So that way, when, when constituents come to us and ask, hey, what happened to that bill you passed? We'll know. This act would provide read-only access to the, to the filing cabinet upon which the, the discussions and review is provided. And, and it, it shall be treated as, uh, an area of confidentiality that, that may not be shared beyond, uh, you know, beyond that visibility, uh, with a special access privilege. Furthermore, the judiciary shall appoint a, a liaison to regularly communicate with the city council, not just the mayor, with the city council, uh, regarding the, uh, the status of any bills that are being reviewed, uh, and it shall be a weekly update. Any questions?
I, I just have a comment.
Uh, we'll get started.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry, you're on.
But do we get start with, um, well, the judiciary, we can start the judiciary first and then the council members after that. Um,
Ooh.
Chief Justice, would you like to come and question the council member?
Oh, there's no question. My comment is simply, uh, it's not necessary. Actually, I do have a question now that you mentioned it.
Yeah.
Um, you said you're wearing a mock-up of a parachute?
That's right.
You don't have any parachutes?
Well, there are no parachutes.
So, but you passed a bill to say that they are legal?
That's right.
But you have no parachutes?
That's correct.
Okay, so what's the point of the bill?
The city council will pass bills that encourage the, the government to, um, uh, to take action.
Hmm. Mr. Williams, has the government taken action based off your fishing, uh, bill that you, uh, proposed recently?
Uh, I mean, the action would be that it's not happening, so I guess that's some sort of action.
It's kind of the same wall, right?
Uh, it, it's, that's not the point. City, the city council exists to pass bills and whether, whether, and whether the federal government chooses to act on them or not is not relevant. We are still here to represent the people's interests.
Okay.
We are not a judicial monarchy.
Okay. Okay, but you don't have any parachutes though, which is unfortunate.
Yeah, it is unfortunate.
What is this, what is this on your back then? Was you making it out of a pillowcase? What is this?
It's a backpack.
Oh, okay. What do you got in there? Parachute?
No.
Sheets.
It's, it's some sheets.
May, may, maybe when,
It's the, it's the hope that there will be a parachute in there.
Exactly. It's filled with hope, your honor.
It's filled with hope. Okay, that's like, it's, I have an allergy to that. Please keep that in there. Just, ugh.
Alright, now, now, please take your seat.
That's actually a good one, Billy. Good job.
That was good, yeah, right.
Alright, any more questions from the public before I move the questions to the council?
There, there's literally no need, uh, for, for a liaison. You could literally just ask me why a bill is passed or not passed and I will happily tell you. Without any sort of, uh, roadblock or gatekeeping or whatever fancy term that the kids will come up with.
I'll even go far to say I, I can talk to him and update the council every week while I'm in power.
The city council would like a direct contact with the judiciary.
No, you would like a direct contact, is what you just said.
Well, no, the, the bill that I'm proposing,
Just gave you the alternative.
The bill that I'm proposing would, would provide it with direct because we are our own branch.
Hmm. Oh, okay. Okay. But again, uh, I, I could literally just tell you directly.
That's fine. I'm okay with that. We would also like visibility into the debate process.
There's the we. Is this a royal we?
Again, should the bill pass, then it is the will of the city council. I, I would think you would know that.
Oh, I would, I would, but you're just speaking as if it's already been passed with the we part when I'm sure,
Again, I'm speaking to the bill.
I'm willing to wager that the people sitting here at this day is, uh, may, may not have all the particulars about what this bill entails.
Maybe if you let them, you know, speak, we would find out.
Let's move the discussion to the people and see what the questions they have. I know there are people with their hands raised. Billy, you might step aside and let the people come to the podium.
So, um, my name's Connor Fitzgerald. Just in the sake of not taking an hour on one discussion, um, I was just proposing a compromise to the council. Uh, a simple docket that lists any bills presented and passed by the city council with a simple, um, section for like, for like memos of updates or comments from the judiciary committee. If it stays in review, just a quick call and review and that's it. It takes five seconds to fill out the memo and post it and the whole weekly thing is kind of a pain because you expect someone to talk about everything, the same thing. If this bill was just pa, was passed, what, you said November, Mr. Falco?
Yes.
You want an update on something that's happened, you want them to discuss the same thing every week and give you the same update every week?
Yes, it, it holds them accountable.
Okay, but that's just, that's just a suggestion for compromise between the two.
No, I do appreciate that, that suggestion. I, I think that's, that's a very reasonable proposal.
No, I'm kidding. You're, you're correct.
Okay, I thought you said you wanted to go to the podium and say that. Uh, appreciate your comment. We'll definitely take that in consideration. Thank you. Uh, state your name and your statement.
Uh, Robert Danob, and I just, uh, something struck me when you were talking about your bill and, uh, you said that, uh, you were asked by constituents, you know, what's going on? I thought you passed a bill, you know, and you used the reasoning that, uh, to keep the, your constituents informed, this needs to be passed. But then you also said that there would be a confidentiality where it doesn't leave the room. So who's it actually for? Is it for the constituents? Is it for the personal members of the city council?
I'm, I'm glad you asked that, so, so I can, I can clarify a bit. The actual dicta or the, the, like, the words that are being used by the judiciary, D-I-C-T-A, dicta.
You spell it however you like. It's, it's still the same thing.
Will not be, will not be shared. However, we, it allows us to provide a status update to the public while still maintaining judicial confidentiality.
The council, the council here is having a hard time with the word dicta. Can you please explain to these two council members here?
Can I have the country of origin?
It, dicta means the,
Is it like dictaphone?
Well, no, well, yes, there is, there is a common, there is a common word.
I'm helping, it's like a sex line.
Hi.
No, dicta means the,
Like dicks to you?
The notes or the actual words that are employed in the enactment and debate of a bill. I'm, I'm doing that from my memory, so I'm slightly off, maybe.
Is this a, is this a legal term?
It's a legal term. Well, it's, it's, it's a legal and a, you know, a government, like legislative term.
Can you use it in a sentence, please?
I'm tired of explaining dicta, period.
That didn't help.
The legislative dicta spoke to the legality of putting alligators in the bathtub.
Okay. That clears enough for that. Um, okay. Uh, Connor, do you have any, uh, another question? Or, or rather, sorry, Billy, do you have another, continue your statement? Are you, are you done?
I do, I, I did have one other thing to add to that, but Connor, if you want.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm all for simplifying things. I really am and transparency for sure. Um, are you, I'm just asking for clarification, just in, just in very simple terms. So basically, you just want the council to be able to just know, be in the know at any point without having to go discuss it with, uh, the chief justice over here or the mayor?
Why not?
Is that kind of correct?
Uh, yes, because the current system sucks. The, the, the city council constantly, it, it just has no idea what's going on and new members of city council are, are disheartened or disenchanted when they realize that we can pass a bill and then it disappears into the ether with no visibility. I believe that it is our duty to change this and ensure that we know what's going on so things don't just float out there forever.
Okay, um, and may, can I ask the other council member something or?
Sure.
Sure, why not?
Okay, uh, I know, Mr. Fox, you're rather new to the city council. Do you feel this way?
Having more visibility in the progress of, uh, certain bills and having seen the archives and the filing cabinet that several bills get passed, that several bills have been sitting in or under review or require finishing, um, certainly would be, um, helpful, but, um, something that the system like you mentioned, like just a memo system of just, here's a bill, here's the progress. Is it finished? Yes. Is it under judicial review? Yes, no. Why is it, um, has it passed judicial review? Yes, no. If yes, why? Um, has it, um, is it acceptable to the, into, um, if, is it, you know, there's stuff like that where it's a, a simple breakdown of like this equals to that. Um, would be, would be fine, but I also can see that since the mayor, um, functions as the, um, head of this, um, a head of the city council and speaks directly with the, um, judiciary, um, I don't see why not. It couldn't be, uh, gone between those two or at the very least, if there is a specific issue where it comes to it, that the judge would, uh, the judicial review board would give notice to the, uh, bill's author and sponsoring parties to, okay? Nina Soda? Okay. Um, that, yeah, that the judicial review could give them some sort of notification. I don't think being on beck and call and having them to, uh, do that would be necessary. Something with just a simple system would be, would suffice.
Okay, and I, I have one, uh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and if certain things are more of a federal government level situation, then, you know, to be clarified in that regard.
Got you. Alright, and this is the last question I'm asked. Mr. Falco, um, so like I said earlier, I'm big on transparency and simplicity. Um, is there a reason that you don't want, uh, the memos public posted for cities, for regular citizens like me to view them? Rather, they need to go through a city council member or the mayor or the justice department to get any information on it?
So I'm not opposed to the status of a bill being available. I just, I didn't, I didn't want, I didn't think it would be appropriate for the judicial debate and dicta to be publicly posted.
Okay.
But I, I absolutely am fine with if there's a way for the public to see specifically, here's this bill and here's the current status. I'm a hundred percent for it.
We, we have that. Have you seen the filing cabinet that we have for that?
Well, bills that get passed by city council don't show up in,
Hmm, I don't think that's accurate unless that's changed.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question, uh, because previously, uh, during my tour into the council, which was a while ago, um, my bill did show up there before, um, before it was actually approved by judiciary. It was there showing up. That's, that's why I was asking. I wasn't sure. Thank you.
No, I, I, that's a good question. It, uh, Councilman, Councilman King, is the Power Legal Act in, in that folder?
Uh, in what folder?
Uh, that's my, well, that's my other question. But, but where, where was the fold?
Um,
So you're unaware of this thing?
Exactly.
Interesting.
I'm unaware of what thing specifically though, because we do have,
The, uh, you know, in the public library, the, uh,
Yeah.
The, the list of bills.
All the bills that the city council posts are not added to the pu, public library. The, the Power Legal Act is not in there.
No, we need to talk to who has the key to that file.
Which, for the record, I do not.
Alright, well, that's something we can investigate though. We can get, trace that down.
I've noticed that the library is in need of some cleaning or filing, um, it's a little bit disordered and, uh, yeah.
Uh, alright, well, move it, just to move this forward.
Robert Danob, yeah, that, hey, just a quick comment and I'm done. Uh, Mr. Falco, thank you very much for your explanation. It makes sense to me now. My suggestion, if you ever present anything like this in the future, make sure you show your dicta.
Yes, sir. Alright, does the council have any questions?
Well, my question is very simple, but I already know the answer and that is, have you talked to the judiciary about this bill?
We have.
Have you?
Just now, just now.
Well, obviously now.
Well, it's not just, it's not just the Power Legal Act, it's all of them. It's any bill that we pass.
I'm not talking about the bills. I'm talking about the bill that you're presenting today. Have you spoken before the meeting
No.
To the judiciary about this? Why not?
Because this is for the city council to vote on.
But this could literally be a con, conversation of, hey, can you do this? And I would say, yeah, sure.
That's not the point of it. Hold on, hold on, Chief Justice, hold on.
It's our duty.
No, hold on.
To hold people accountable. You say that a lot, yeah.
Hold on, both of you. The point that I'm trying to make is, if you're writing a bill, that you would do your due diligence to figure out and talk to the very es, experts that this will affect on when you write the bill out, that it would meet criteria that are both beneficial to both parties. That way, the bill is properly written in a way that could get passed. And now considering we have to pass everything and get everything through the judiciary, that you would think about bringing this to him for review before drafting it completely and presenting it to us. That's why I ask those questions, but,
I'm glad you asked, but I don't agree.
Oh, that's fine. We can disagree. Um, any other council members have any questions?
Yeah, just a quick one. Like, yeah, Mr. Falco, I, I don't see this as, uh, maybe it's more of a statement, not a question. I don't see this as completely necessary. Um, it is just, yeah, adding more steps into getting the judicial process done. I don't think this transparency, as you call it, is, there's a lack of it. Because much like, uh, the mayor had made mention of, you just asked the, the, the guy in charge. You go, hey, where's it at? And then he lets you know. Or the guy in charge can be talking to the mayor and the mayor can let us know what's happening. Like, I, I don't know.
So you're okay with the current system?
Yeah, I'm, I, I am fine with the current system, yes.
But this doesn't speak to the effectiveness or the, you know, the, uh, I'd say the processes themselves, right? Cause those could be improved, but not the, you know, not the,
Mr. Mayor, um, thi, this has to go with what I see as a repeated problem coming from the councilman is that you're not reaching out to the people who can answer your questions.
Oh, I agree with that. I agree with that.
You could have just asked him, much like previously when we had an emergency section with the Business of Revenue Bureau, where you could have reached out to the director at that time to resolve the situation. Instead, you wasted the time of, I don't know, Mr. Definitely Councilman King, definitely, uh, Mr. Mayor's time, my time, by going out for this.
Again,
But my point was just on the process. We can improve our process, still have the,
And this is improving the process. That's what this bill is for.
Say again, Billy?
That's what this bill is for.
Well, no.
To improve process.
Well, even that shouldn't be in a bill. The improve a process shouldn't be in a bill. I thought the point of this bill was to have, the, the point, to, to improve this process isn't necessarily something that should be like a bill. Meaning, we shouldn't put a bill to say, hey, we have four folders to put all of our bills into that pass through this and that. That shouldn't be a bill to do that. That's just something we do. Now, as far as what I thought your bill was about and what I'm reading here, was about the judiciary opening up its, basically its procedures and policies and this decision-making to the council.
Correct.
And I do believe in separation of government and checks and balances, which would mean we wouldn't have insight and influence on them. We could read their, their dissents. If the judiciary would like to write a dissent on a law or bill, they have every right to do that, just like we have every right to ask them, what's the status of the bill? So, eh, I, I'm only saying this because I don't see the need for this. I, I do see, maybe we should review how we file our bills, how we present it to the public, how it's presented in the library. I think we should do that. Do I think we should pass a bill that says, hey, we need to look over the shoulder judiciary, get all of its processes and all of that? I'm against. Um, I just don't see the need for it now. I do see a need for us to maybe present the bills to the public a little better and for our own record-keeping, but that's just my take on it, uh, and that's just my statement.
I understand your position and I will temporarily withdraw the bill so I have time to rewrite it to, to adjust, because you are right about separation of powers. Um, I, I, I am going to withdraw the bill and rewrite it to adjust it so that the judiciary provide, uh, provide current statuses, uh, current and timely statuses on, on bills.
And I like your gumption. Matter of fact, I wanna have you take a look at the filing system currently and maybe come up with a solution on how we could present these things to the public and to the judiciary and to the council in a better way.
Cause, once again, I care about accountability and giving the public visibility i, into the, into the process.
Uh, speaking of the process, can I, can I, can I make a quick comment?
Uh, yeah, please go to the podium, uh, Justice, and make your statement.
I wasn't finished, okay.
Just a quick comment.
I'll give, I'll, I'll give you the floor back.
Just, just a moment. Mr. Reeves, uh, Mayor Reeves, I should say. Uh, when, when the big business bill or business act or whatever we called it was, was passed, uh, and, and it wasn't given judicial assent, uh, did I speak to you about that?
Yes, yes you did.
And, and, and we worked on, on how you should probably fix that and, and I gave you the reasoning as to why this bill probably isn't gonna work the way it is in its current form?
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
Okay, was that, was I as transparent as I could be in that?
To me, because I asked, of course.
Oh, okay. So you, so you asked me and I, and I gave you the answer?
I did, yes.
Okay, would you, would you think that's a reasonable solution for these people to, to do if, if anybody, literally anybody in this room has a question about any bill that's ever been passed as to whether or not I've, I've passed it or not, I will absolutely and gladly, uh, tell you my reasonings as to why and why not.
Oh, I could fully agree. I think that people should have the right to ask.
Absolutely, and I fully support that. Um, so, I mean, let that be known that, uh, I'm always here at city hall and, uh, I'm very easy to get ahold of. Um, so whatever questions you have, I gladly will answer them. Um, you know, you can, you can say that, you know, you need to hold me accountable because I'm just so mi, so shady and mysterious, uh, but I, I consider myself an open book. Um, so feel free to, uh, to ask me about any, any bill that has been passed or has not and, uh, I will gladly, uh, give you my feedback as to why or why not. Um, I, I think I've done it so far. Um, what, what has it been, you know, published or, or put anywhere? Probably not, but I have been very vocal about bills that I think, uh, are, are passable and bills that are not. Um, I, I would like to think that, uh, whichever of you council members I've spoken to about bills, uh, wo, would agree with me on that. Um, all, all it takes at the end of the day is just a simple conversation.
I appreciate the statement.
And that's really all I got.
Thank you, Chief Justice. Uh, Billy, I'm sorry I cut you off. I really wish the time back to you, or the floor back to you. Um, if you have any other statements, um,
No.
I just wanted to get that out. I feel the judiciary wanted to speak. I wanted to get him up there.
And I, I, I appreciate that, that, uh, that Vinnie, And I, 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 I appreciate that, that, uh, that Vinnie, uh, that Chief Justice is willing to share that information upon request, but I believe that it should be, it should be openly available to the members of the city council. And not, we shouldn't just have to request it, it should just be available. I saved my time.
Oh, Colin?
Sorry.
Yeah, you have something to say, man? You go ahead, no, go ahead. Um, this is just, just in general for city council. Um, I, I mean, it goes into what was just said. Um, cause I was in the city council and you, you told me that you've used the bill, the Fire Department Establishment Act as a, as a kind of like a template for like how people should like do their bills. Um.
The bureau bill and, yeah.
So I, I just wanna, I just wanna give like a quick experience on that. I spent weeks on that, and during my time, I talked with each individual department that that would affect. I talked to the chief of police and all of their command. I talked to EMS and all of their command at the time. The incoming fire command, I talked to judiciary, I talked to city, other city council members, I talked to citizens. And anytime you have a bill impacting anything that involves another group of people, you, you have to, Mr. Falco, you have to go talk to them, or the people will lose their faith in you entirely.
Uh, thank you for your statement.
I appreciate the commentary.
Alright. Mr. Silver Fox. River Fox, I said Silver Fox, didn't I? River Fox.
Thank you.
Silver Fox is pretty sick, sir.
Yeah, when I, when I get, when I go gray, that's what I want people to call me.
Why? Yeah, no, that makes me feel bad.
I'll leave some, uh, uh, copies of my bill here for people wanna, um, check it out and kinda spend a little bit of time. There's a bit of a presentation. There you go, wish we had a table or something like that. Um. Hello, City Council Member Chaz River Fox, uh, presenting the Sandy Shores Revitalization Bill. Uh, within it, uh, I hope to bring a, um, new life and potential to Sandy Shores in the form of low-cost starter homes for people to, uh, plant their roots and, um, build a community up in the north. Uh, Plato Bay has a lot going on for it, uh, the city as well, the city. But the Sandy Shores Harmony Grape Seed Route sixty-eight out there tends to be a little bit overlooked. Uh, so part of this bill is also what I'm referring to as Project Desert Flowers. Which is hopefully to bring those homes up, um, uh, homes that are reminiscent of architecture around the, um, Sonora Sea and, uh, to give people a opportunity at homeownership. Uh, inside the, uh, presentation, you'll see that, um, I've established a breakdown of which prop- which vacant lots are there, the potential hazards or risks that would come about when it comes to procuring the land there and, uh, establishing a, um, establishing either a, uh, public business, uh, with oversight by the uh, city go- uh, by the city council, the mayor, um, to do, or through the oper- the option of hi- hiring a private construction company, uh, to bring about those homes up there. Uh, and, um, if you have any questions about, um, other processes and hopefully this is a little bit more formal than the basic one, uh, presentation, uh, and, uh, the videotape I left in the, uh, in our filing cabinet.
Alright, um, I'm gonna open this up to the public first and then the council. The public can just go to the podium, uh, state your name and your statement.
Hello, Director Roxy here. I just questioning, um, uh, what, what is the goal here? You trying to gent- gentrify Sandy Shores or what exactly is your goal here?
Sandy Shores as a whole in comparison to places like Grape Seed, Harmony, uh, the Greater Chaparral Hills and Route sixty-eight, uh, doesn't have the sufficient level of, uh, housing that other communities across San Andreas has. Uh, and this is hopefully to allow for these, uh, low-cost starter homes uh, to be established in order to build up Sandy Shores and to encourage, uh, its development. Uh, it is not, is not an attempt at gentrification. It is merely a way to make sure that that community, which has been neglected for some years, uh, potentially decades, um, is given its time in the spotlight.
So you're trying to say that you're trying to just, uh, the pricing for help? Isn't this more of a Dynasty Eight question?
Well, because of the land in question, um, are basically open lots. Dynasty Eight only sells, uh, and Mr. Rizzo is here in the audience, and he can answer any questions when it comes to real estate. But the intention of this is to build houses so that way, um, that are fitting with the community and the surrounding, um, neighborhoods, uh, up in the Sonora Desert. Rather than, um, just throwing up any kind of houses up there. I wouldn't put Mira Park, um, custom homes in Sandy Shores, it'd be too much of a conflict. But there's a few ranches, um, and, um, a single-story bungalows, uh, located on Route sixty-eight that would be ideal for Sandy Shores to be built there. And there's a number of open lots that are just sitting vacant. Um, we'd have to do a review process in order to see who the owners are before, uh, attempting to, uh, do any kind of development or purchasing of those properties that are either abandoned or have been, um, uh, ceded back to the government. But that would be part of the due process and due diligence of the, uh, council in order to have that land properly and legally acquired.
Okay, uh, it, it just sounds like it's more of a, you know, you know, you, you need to have sort of things that attract people to these areas and being up a director up in Sandy, there's been plenty of times that, uh, you know, attractions coming and going in Sandy, being there needs to be, you know, like, uh, you know, a cornerstone there. If anything, I feel like if anything, not housing more of a, you know, a kind of like a farming community or something going on there. But, but that, that's my comments for another day. Anyway, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Housing does bring people to an area. If there's new houses that people are wanting to live in at the prices that we're hopeful to have them at, that's the, the ultimate goal is to get that community up its numbers in order to attract businesses, that there is this burgeoning community, um, which is what the intention of this project is. Thank you, Doctor Roxy.
Yeah, thanks, Doc. State your name and your statement.
Uh, current resident of, uh, the Sandy Shores area. So you say you're trying to get, uh, Tim Bradford? Timothy Bradford?
Hey, Mr. Bradford.
How you doing? Uh, as a current resident of the Sandy Shores area, um, with you trying to, uh, get people to move up there and open up housing, um, is this also stands, is this to bring in more police presence and more medical presence, uh, to that area? We have a lot of locals that are very hostile. Um, and bringing more people up there, I feel like would anger some of the locals in that area. So are you looking to bring not only more police, more doctors, but also more businesses out there to kinda revitalize that area? As stated, I'm a current resident there. I would like to see the growth of Sandy Shores and those surrounding areas, but I wanna know what, like, the full plan of what you're planning to do to revitalize that area, not just bring housing in, put a whole bunch of people there and just leave it there as just, here's housing.
Correct. If you look in on the proposal, um, the, uh, the parcels that are of interest are, um, located between Algonquin Boulevard and, uh, Zancudo Avenue. And then, um, are basically chopped up by Panorama Drive, uh, Lita Avenue and, uh, Mountain View Drive, and I believe Armadillo Avenue. So there's about, potentially with, uh, with the way things are currently, um, set up, there is, um, one lot that's just basically empty. There's nothing there besides a few freestanding, um, burnout structures and, um, I think a cut through that people have carved into. Um, in addition to, uh, two different lots that are, um, opposite of currently occupied homes. And the first page of the, um, proposal goes over the current census of occupied, excuse me, occupied homes across Sandy Shores or viable places. Um, the majority of those homes are of a, um, are trailer homes, um, mobile homes, manufactured homes, whatever you wanna call them. Uh, having actual houses, uh, with a foundation in ground um, is hopefully the, uh, to en- to encourage people to go up there and to see the utilization of the facilities that are in Sandy Shores. We have a, a fine sheriff's department, uh, uh, fire sheriff's station that's, um, up there with a helipad. And we have the Sandy Shores Medical Center that's also there. Uh, hopefully with that, uh, with more people up there, there would be more of a utilization of those facilities for local people uh, rather than having to rely on, um, city services that could be a great distance away. And if there's people in Sandy Shores utilize, uh, if there are people of the, um, uh, medical department, the, uh, police department utilizing those spaces, it'll reduce response times to Plato Bay significantly.
That's the only question I have. Thank you very much. And I hope to see Sandy Shores and the surrounding areas, uh, to be populated and for us to have more presence of police and/or medical facility usage up there. That'd be really nice to see. Keep the crime out of Sandy.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your statement. Thanks for your time.
Uh, how's it going? Julie Rizzo, CEO of Dynasty Eight. Um, I agree with what the two o- other, uh, you know, civilians before me have said. Uh, but I also have spoken to Mr. River Fox yesterday when he, uh, kinda pitched this idea towards me before he brought it before the council. Um, first and foremost, as the, you know, representative from Dynasty Eight, uh, of course, if this does not only, you know, get passed by city council, but more importantly, if the residents of Blaine County uh, also are very supportive and vocal about this, we would be more than happy, uh, to foot the bill to build these new homes. Now, again, they're not gonna be, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollar homes. They're gonna be what they should be for the area. So affordable housing for the people that live up there. And, uh, like was stated by, yeah, um, uh, Roxy right here. There's, you know, homes are great. That gives the opportunity for people to, you know, fill them. But, uh, there do, there does need to be some more attractions in the area of Blaine County. Now, you know, uh, we've probably all seen, but in the last week, uh, a used car dealership has opened up. It's fantastic. That's what the community needs, especially up that way, probably with the sort of vehicles that are driven up in that way. So that's a, it's a great start. Um, but, you know, uh, also Roxy something mentioned was, you know, the farming community, agriculture, all that good stuff. Uh, I'm sure some of, some of us have seen, um, but in a few, uh, past newspapers, there's been, uh, things about how Grape Seed is gonna be on the rise soon. Sandy will be on the rise soon with those sort of jobs and markets. So I think, uh, this could be something to lay out the, you know, foundation for that. Because very soon Blaine County will start having more and more population, it seems, and more and more jobs. So, again, if this is not only something city council wants and approves, but more importantly, the people of that area are vocal, uh, and supportive for, we'd be more than happy to, you know, potentially build those homes and, uh, pay the price for them. So then we could get more people up north and hopefully they are filled not only with citizens up there, but, uh, the responding parties from EMS and, uh, PD and the sheriff so they can protect those citizens. So, that's all I wanted to mention, is that, you know, we're on board with it as long as all of the correct people are on board with it.
I believe there's also a fire station or a fire cantina that's up there that could be
There is.
that is in need of some, uh, restoration, more than just, more than a paint job and a whole lot of TLC. But that would complete the trifecta of a Blaine County specific, um, facility for, um, servicing of those areas. And, uh, instead of having to rely on, instead of having city services um, propel themselves at great distances in order to try and get to someone whose life might be in danger or a, uh, crime that's happening up in Plato Bay, having a Davis police officer take their cruiser all the way up is gonna be minutes of time that could have, uh, saved a person or, uh, prevented a crime from happening.
Absolutely.
I have a question, um.
Yeah.
So, um, first off, thanks for making the comment. I know that, um, it helps, uh, clear everything up. My question is, let's say the, the council does pass this bill, what kind of timeframe and, and, and everything, and we're looking for, uh, construction to get the houses available to the public? Uh, considering once this bill does pass, becomes public record, there's gonna be a lot of delays.
Yeah, uh, on our end, of course, there'll be a little red tape because not only, you know, it's, it's great and it's all good and well, that there's a nice empty lot. And if it does get passed, of course, we'll have to do our due diligence to make sure that it's, you know, good land for a home, make sure that there's no actual, you know, all the testing that goes along with making sure we could purchase that land, acquire it, and then build homes on it. Uh, I would say, you know, construction is not quick, it's not easy, uh, it is an uphill battle. But I would say at the longest, uh, worst-case scenario, maybe two months from the time the bill will be passed and community support behind it earliest, maybe, uh, just a handful of thr- maybe three weeks, four weeks. Uh, and we could probably get a good handful of homes built on a nice empty lot, start a nice little community in Sandy. Uh, one thing I forgot to mention too, is there is not only the used car lot, uh, that's just recently opened up, but, uh, the biggest attraction up in Sandy is Route sixty-eight. You know, they have tons of employees, uh, it's a bustling mechanic shop. So there are things out there that attract not only people, but more importantly, the workforce. So they do need more than just, um, you know, trailer homes and, uh, some very kinda small, almost bombed-out homes in Sandy. Uh, you know, by the old abandoned apartments, uh, you can see the kind of ranch homes that are there and they're not too great. Uh, so if we couldn't fix those up, I would definitely be on board to building some nice ones that are fitting for the area, still nice ranch homes. But, you know, they, they have the quality that people would want to move into and want to lay their roots down in Sandy.
One of the things that also would hope to see, given that the, um, city sanitation, um, having a secondary sanitation site in Blaine County in order to help, um, tackle any of the, uh, garbage and recycling issues that happen up north there where the city facility might not be able to send trucks out that far. And so having some, something like that, um, potentially either in Sandy Shores or in the, uh, uh, along the, uh, Taravim Pass, um, or on the Sonora Freeway would certainly, um, add to more city services and having Blaine County be seen as a, um, an equal to Los Santos rather than a lesser to Los Santos.
Absolutely. Alright, thank you all for the time.
And I appreciate your service.
You're very handsome, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Oh, Cecil Barst, civilian of Los Santos, thank you very much for proposing this bill. One concern of mine is that you say that, uh, the thing that will drive people in there is vacant housing. I can tell you that from my experience, that is not true. One of the most plentiful things that will drive people to a place, job opportunities first and foremost. When they have a steady workflow, like, uh, young River Fox said, or another sanitation, or perhaps even, let's say however, the construction opportunities provided with building these new houses to give some people jobs, because right now, we've just got steel-toed boots getting mauled by murder kittens and things of that nature out by Plato, with washing a window where seventy-two stories up, who wants to do that? Who knows? But, uh, commerce is one thing, working and the, uh, people trying to make an honest dollar need to find a place to work. If you could offer more job opportunities, I would say that would lead people fur- further and quickly. If you could offer more job opportunities, I would say that would lead people fur- further and quickly. To the sandiest of shores, it would, when the houses complete, the more people would occupy them. Indeed, we could move out some of the eyesore rusty trailers with with people pointing uh shotguns. When you try and wave hello, they just say, get out of here or that sort of thing. But it was, it's it's all of the, all of that, all of those as well.
I think the animosity has been uh for some of the residents up in Blaine County and Sandy Shores. Has just been because there hasn't been any kind of assistance. They're almost overlooked. It's a pass through. Off the highway that you can either avoid by going further up Sonora Freeway. Or uh you hit the left at uh the Yellow Jack and suddenly now you're in Harmony. So I do think that animosity for years of neglect um is valid. And uh in some instances potentially warranted, but we're hoping to bring that um hostility potentially down. As we start to go, hey, we're trying to, like, we'd like, we are trying to improve things and to uh bring value to that community.
Yeah, and I will just say this, um as far as hiring goes, obviously the city is always hiring. I know that every pillar of the city currently is hiring and maybe hiring freezes, which I'll speak about in my statements, but um. I believe Burger Shot is hiring, so I I do appreciate your statements and you're a hundred percent right. Um we will look into that, getting jobs up north, but um. For the record, we are, everyone right now in City Hall is hiring as well, so.
Well, yes, I'm, I'm sure there's someone mentioned that there was a a member of uh, what is this called? The District Aid or something like that. That they could speak more to the real estate. How many vacant uh domiciles are there in 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 that sector of the city? Right now, why are we building new ones? Dynasty eight, yes, indeed, that one as well.
What what does domicile mean?
It was means of private res- residence that is enclosed by walls, ceiling and roof with at least one exit per fiery grass. You're a councilman, you should know that, Boblin, young Boblin.
Yeah, I don't know a lot of things.
I don't either. You would think that.
He knows, he knows how to get the people to vote for him, though, that's one thing he does.
Yep, yep.
What it, what, this will be, I have another question to ask at the end of it, but what I, what I would, okay. What I would say is that let's, let's work on filling the existing vacancies before building new houses. I will. We will sit back in my chair. Thank you very much for your time.
I appreciate your statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're handsome.
I actually had a question for for the gentleman who was just asked, just speaking. Uh Cecil, would you mind coming back up for a moment?
Oh yes, no problem. All right, what is it?
Sir, we have um an opening for uh on city, for city council. Would you be willing to consider? Uh putting your name in?
Absolutely not, no. I've, I've, I've slept too much. An old man like me can't stay hip with you young, young folks with your, with your, your alarm clocks. So what is it called, these electronics? I I wake and sleep. When the, when the cock crows in the morning, I wake up. I'm, sometimes I sleep uh too early, I'm sorry. But I would humbly, I would humbly refuse. Thank you. Thank you though.
Thank you, thank you for your comment, sir.
Thank you.
Your name and.
Robert Brenner, Blaine County residents. How are you? Uh on this um, well. Uh on this uh act that you wanna do with uh building uh homes up there and such. What is gonna be the remedy to protect construction workers or the people that are already residents in that area? From the meth addicts, the cougars and just the psychos that will just generally shoot you. Or stab you for revving your engine, um going through your own garbage.
I'm gonna defer this, this, this answer to the police because that's the answer to your question.
No.
Who should we take? The police?
And, yeah.
I don't wanna go up there. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I appreciate it better. I mean, I'm not, uh, police, that's the answer to the question. Uh next question.
Hello, guy, I just thought I'd come back up and direct to Roxy about the revitalization and uh. About business opportunities. Um yeah, there's a lot of business opportunities up there. I mean, that could be with a lot of support with the, you know, with the council and all such as grape seeds farming and agriculture community. Um Harmony does have a few oil fields around there and around San Kuro, there seems to be a winery. You know, a lot of cherry picking could be done around there as well. There are a lot of opportunities and I would strongly encourage. Before this passes and everything, that the uh the council really considers the possible business opportunities. That could be facilitated up there besides, you know, because housing is all good, but if you don't have reasons for people wanting to move up there. You're just gonna have a lot of empty homes.
Uh what do you propose you put up there to help people, uh entire people up there?
Well, like I said, for instance, grape seed, you could, you really gotta support the agricultural businesses. Um Harmony, you could potentially have a lot of oil, you know, a lot of um oil drilling or such as that. Um around San Kuro, there's a really nice winery and um you know, great um, you know, cherry picking.
You gonna, you gonna say something?
Which is really good. Um but yeah, but I feel like before proposing this bill, really researched, you know, what sort of um.
You got.
Job opportunities and what sort of, you know, things that people could, you know, have set their roots down there. You know, people need a stable job. And a stable income to support their life there, you know. What's, what's the point in living but Sandy if you're just gonna be, you know, driving into town, you know, sometimes people. You know, can't afford, you know, to drive into town all the time. It is a long trek.
That it is, that it is. I definitely, um, we'll take any consideration maybe, we'll uh, we'll take those words into consideration. The bill, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh Ce- Cecil Boss against civilian of Lo- Los Santos, I would, I would just, I don't ma- mean to make a movement in inside of a movement. But I'd move to open the floor to discussion on that further in depth at, at the end of this, uh the closure of this discussion. If that is, because I have a couple of ideas of my own for commerce that might enrich the, the, the community of Blaine County. And even as far, far, far north is, is Palmetto Shores.
Uh perhaps you would like to speak with Mr. Chaz River, River Fox directly on that, uh sometime, collaborate.
Yeah, what we could do is table it, have further discussion with. This gentleman and the doctor about, and even Jilly if he wants to get involved, to. Give the bill more strength in it that it would bring more patrons to buy these homes. Um I think that would be a wise decision to make.
That's amenable. I'm amenable to that.
Yeah, so is that motion seconded?
Se- secondary.
Um so we will do that. We, the motion is passed, we'll still uh.
Alright.
We'll, we'll have further discussion and after the meeting, if you want to get with Chaz. Um as well as Doc and and Jilly to talk further about rejuvenation of Sandy Shores would be great. Uh you have the floor, sir.
Hello, Barry Tabernacle, so long time resident of Sandy Shores, owner of mediocre average motorsport. Over in Route sixty eight, sorry, I don't know which one I'm supposed to face. Uh just like to say. As, as, as far as low price homes go, I think we've got enough in Sandy Shores. I do wanna bring up the attention that there's a giant motel that could be kinda brought back to life and, and you know, by Mr. Jelly Rizzo over there and I'm sure Mr. River Fox could, you know, do that, which would offer low price places to live. Without the potential of kinda an empty home when a, a biker goes to jail forever type thing. So it is lovely to see all this about for Sandy Shores. Uh I don't think the motel might be, a lot of these people come and go quick is all I'm saying. And uh the, the, and like everyone else said, opportunities will bring people up there, but. It is keeping them there with long-term opportunities, that seems to be the thing. So I think the motel might be your best bet. Then that's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Alright, appreciate it.
Thank you. You're handsome.
Thank you.
So um I'm gonna move, if anyone doesn't know, question for the public, I'll move, I know we've tabled this. So if, but to close it out, do you guys have any more questions before we uh move forward?
No questions.
No questions, alright.
Alright. Name is Chase Reeves, mayor. I'm uh, I don't have any bills to put forward this week, but I do have um. But I don't wanna hold this up for about an hour, so um I did wanna open up the floor for a discussion. But um I'm gonna table that discussion until next week, but it's gonna be about um overseeing the aviation and flight school. So we'll be talking about that next week. Uh moving forward on the business though, um I wanted to open up the floor to people that wanted to run for city council. For the, to the seat, um to come to the podium, um state their name and their, and their soapbox or their. Their platform and uh so we can get voted for the last seat. So anyone interested, please come to the podium and state your name. If there is no one else, we'll move it along till next week.
I'll pay you five thousand dollars to.
Do we have another reservation?
No way.
We have another red uh seat from the resident, resident.
No way.
Wait, if I go up, I'm gonna be the only one.
Yep. Yep.
If I stand corrected, there's two, two seats open. If no one wants to, to have forth their name, we'll go ahead and end the council meeting today.
I believe uh.
You're doing it, huh?
Uh Dr. Cat did mention um.
I don't like talking in front of large crowds.
Is your hand on my knee?
As a suggestion.
You put your hand on my knee.
Recommend is not here either, so.
Do it, do it. Neither am I, but do it.
Uh one, uh I'd like to put my name forward, just.
Yeah, do it.
Just to, uh name is uh Timothy Bradford.
Do it.
I, I kinda wanna talk to everyone here at the same time. Uh I know I'm newer to the uh, the city of Los, Los Santos here.
Do it, Robin.
Um but I've had a chance to meet a lot of you guys and uh. I'd like to throw my hat in the ring as, as for one of the seats of city council. Um I bring fresh eyes and fresh ears to the city that might be valuable. I won't do that. Uh I bring fresh eyes and fresh ears to the city.
Yeah.
To try and help, do what I can to help people's voices be heard and um. I would love the opportunity and chance to be uh. Have the opportunity to be on city council, that's, that's all I wanted to say. Alright, so council, any questions for him? Yeah, uh actually Williams, how do you spell your first name? T I M O T H E E, Timothy Bradford. Sorry, sorry, you, you don't spell it with a Y? No. Oh, I already did. Oh, I already did. Uh. Two E's, yes. Any more questions uh for the gentleman?
Okay, I'm gonna go up behind them. What's your favorite color?
My favorite color is green.
Alright, thank you. Can't wait to see you on the council.
But, but, but follow up, why are you not wearing green?
Yes, good job.
What would your first bill be if you, you were? Uh I would actually like to help Chaz with his current bill with the Sandy Shores revitalization. Uh bill, cause that actually seems something that is really needed is to push people to the north to really revitalize that area. So, so no, no, no original ideas, you're just bandwagoning. It's very political. I like it. Absolutely.
Thank you for your political answer.
Thank you.
That wasn't very nice.
Alright, make sure um. Nope. Other, yeah, sure. T- Timo T. We got Timo T. down. Yeah, just say you're anti wildlife.
Yep, uh Benjamin Riggs, I'm not actually trying to get on the council. Uh I'm actually gonna nominate someone. That should uh step up and come to the coun- uh join the council, uh Robin Elwood.
He will let you put your, your, your endorsement in.
I second, I second the endorsement for Robin Elwood.
Uh yeah, endorse Robin.
I thirded, I thirded.
I fourthed.
Yeah, I'm seven.
Go, Robin, go.
Whoa, why did you mean by that?
I mean, we could keep going to infinity.
Why did you choose that specific number?
Robin, 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 Robin. Do it.
I'm assuming you're Robin, Robin.
Mr. Riggs, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So what you're saying.
Tell him, Robin.
Do you know if Robin wants to be on city council?
Uh she's tried running three times and never has pushed herself through.
That's not true.
Well, did she, did she, did she put the proper paperwork in?
Robin.
No, she didn't, but she want, but she's been wanting to.
Robin.
People want me.
I, yeah.
Do you want to be on city council, Robin? Or is this man forcing you to do something?
Are you, are you under duress?
I am not being forced against my will to be on city council.
Okay, but do you want to be on city council?
Yeah, yeah, I do, I do.
I don't trust that.
From a degree of one to ten, how do you, how much you really wanna do?
Ten out of ten, very confident.
I know her and I don't think that that's accurate. Oh.
Well, she's stating it is, so, you know, eleven, eleven out of ten.
Oh, I like that. That's a good hint there, Robin.
Thirteen.
Oh, wow.
Sure, we can probably keep counting up to sixty-nine.
She's really, she really wants it.
Robin, would you say this man, Benjamin Riggs, a man is putting words in your a female's mouth and trying to force you to do something you don't wanna do?
No, I wanna do that.
Ooh, wait, I wanna be a female that can speak on behalf of her, please.
Oh, okay. I'll believe it then.
Alright.
Why, Vinnie? Why? That's. Who said that? I'm gonna write it down. Is it cause I'm too emotional, Vinnie? Good, I'm glad. Anyway, hello, I am fellow citizen and businesswoman Red Rizzo. I would love to speak uh on, on the, on the, the matter of having wonderful Robin here as a city council member. Um mainly because A, um as being a part of the, the wonderful PD that we have. I think it would be very beneficial to have a, a law-abiding and law-acting citizen. That would be very helpful in terms of aiding with.
Are you implying that I don't follow the law?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm just saying it's nice to have additional, but I, I, I would say that it would be a good addition in the sense of getting a fresh perspective. That citizens I know crave from PD, uh from an actual member of PD. Uh that also being said, uh as a fellow lady, I also would like to see more female members up here just for diversity sake.
Fellow lady is confusing. That statement's fellow and lady, like.
I didn't say fella, but fellow.
I got you, I'm with you.
Yes.
I have a question for her.
Oh, please, go ahead.
What color is Robin's hair?
It is Auburn and it is authentic.
What, what color? Okay, that's not true. What, what color is my hair?
That would be uh what I would call in my household slime green, sir. It is very tradition in my household.
That's very, that's very polite of you. Thank you so much. I really, yeah, I really appreciate that. That, enough compliments, this isn't about me.
Uh do you agree that having her on city council with her Auburn slash red hair?
And me with my slime green hair, as you so eloquently placed it, might cause confusion amongst the people? That they think that we're trying to push Christmas on them at parts of the year that aren't festive?
I don't believe so, no.
I was kinda thinking it might be like a red light and a green light situation.
Um if, if I may, if I may.
I don't celebrate Christmas.
We'll need to get someone with yellow hair other than Billy Falco onto the council.
Oh, uh, no. If, if I may, color theory is at play here and red cancels out green. So if anything, it will draw attention when you do speak, when you come up individually.
Are you saying she's gonna cancel me?
I hope not. Anyway, my point still stands. I think it would be, I think it would actually be very beneficial for members of city council. As well as people who attend the meeting uh to have a member of PD for the reasons I stated. Uh though she may be soft-spoken and though she may be uh a little, a little shy, I think that she could definitely bring a, a lot to the table. And be very uh eye-opening to the citizens as well as city council. Thank you. I'm gonna sit back down now cause my fucking knee hurts. Boblin.
Can't, can't, can't caution city.
Sorry, freaking.
I'm more confident now.
Yes, uh I appreciate your comment. I definitely.
Bigger number.
Hear from Robin herself. So Robin, tell me or tell the council here what your platform would be. While you sit amongst the council.
We hate wildlife is what someone has suggested.
I concur.
So your platform for running on city.
People all the time.
Oh.
Say that again?
Oh, I.
They murder people all the time, wildlife.
Oh, they murder, they, the animals murder people. Murder kitty.
Oh, they murder, they, the animals murder people, murder kitties!
Oh, not, the city council are not murdering anyone.
No, we're. Okay.
I would hope.
I went through an explosion. I would hope so, too.
I have a, I have, I have a question for Robin when she's done.
I love the PD, I think they're very misunderstood. The people, they hate cops, cops are the worst, cops are the root of, of all the problems here. But I'm here to make sure, a, a few less people think that.
Robin, what do you, what do you think about drinking and driving? You're, you're feeling that I'm drinking and driving?
There are a lot of false rumors that have, uh, floated around about me and drinking and driving.
It's alright, Robin, we can help you with your, uh.
I don't have a fucking alcohol problem.
And you didn't lose all your money at the casino!
I didn't.
Please don't cuss, please don't cuss at city council, ma'am, please use decorum properly.
Break.
I, I have two questions for her.
Alright.
Are you done with your statement, ma- ma'am?
Uh, for now.
Well, please continue if you have more to say.
I mean, if I think about anything else, I'll say it.
Okay, my two questions are, one, uh, how do you feel about mayoral candidates? And do you condone the attempted assassinations of any of them?
If I believed that a mayoral candidate was a, uh, a sincere and genuine threat to our great nation. Uh, I would not assassinate them, I would not make an attempt to assassinate them. I am a law-abiding citizen.
But you didn't say if you would condone that or not, you didn't say specifically.
I would use the power of voting.
To make sure they don't make it into the council?
Yes.
So assassinate them via vote?
Yes.
Okay, okay, second question.
Hmm, I, I don't like to use that term, but yes.
Uh, why are you afraid of that term?
It could imply that I'm gonna use a letter bomb or, or something.
What?
What?
Like a, a bomb inside a letter.
Uh, why would you?
Or like an explosive voting machine?
Oh my gosh, why?
Is this something you put?
Yeah, yeah, Robin, lost the vote.
At this time, uh, as Robin Elwood's campaign advisor, my name's Thomas DeAngelo, nice to meet you. Uh, all questions directed at, uh, future councilman, uh, sorry, councilwoman, Robin Elwood, uh, shall be directed to me.
Wait, are you gonna be vying for her then?
Uh, I have a que- I have a question, so.
Unless, oh, yes, go ahead.
Are you a man taking this woman's voice away from her?
Uh, no, I'm just not allowing you, a man, to bombard, uh, this fine officer of the law and fine woman of the law. Uh, with ridiculous, uh, redundant questions.
Preach!
I'm sure, I'm sure the councilman does not intend to belittle the future possible council.
Well, it certainly seems like it at the moment, uh, due to my, my, my clients, uh, current predicament.
Flyin'.
Uh, Robin, do you, do you, Robin, do you allow this man to speak for you when it comes to questions?
Yes.
For te- you do? Okay, fine, I'll allow, I'll allow.
We stand as one.
Alright, so what would your first bill be, um, if you were on sitting on the council? Take your time.
Uh, is, is Robin going to have Tommy DeAngelo with her at all times when she's at council?
I am merely a campaign advisor, I, uh, I have no.
He's here to advise me.
Yeah, once she is, is obviously elected into, into council, I, uh, I will relinquish my, relinquish my position as her advisor.
So what you're saying is, we should vote for her with the knowledge that you're helping advise her, but you won't be advising her when she's on council?
Uh, yes, it's a campaign.
Like technically she's campaigning right now with us, so as his campaign measures. So that she's gonna fire her campaign staff immediately after, you know, you keep her?
I know, I will just resign my position. She won't need a campaign.
So you don't believe in her leadership?
No, I totally, one hundred percent will vote for Robin Elwood for literally any position on planet earth. But, uh, in this particular circumstance, she is, uh, running for the, that of a city councilwoman. And, uh, I will be advising her as her campaign advisor, until she is, until she is elected as, uh, as such.
And then she'll be an elected official, therefore not needing the campaign, therefore.
Yes, I, I, if she wants, if she wants a cabinet of staff underneath her, I will be her chief of staff. If she, if she duly elects me as such.
Wi- Robin, will you want a staff when you're on city council?
Yeah, well, you want.
I think it would be, hmm, good to have.
But you want your chief of staff to be a man, though, I mean, like.
Like a wizard's staff?
Yes, Chaz.
Alright.
Okay.
Um, do you have any more questions for her?
Like a wizard's staff, yes.
Uh, any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, do you condone gambling?
Uh, don't answer that, you don't have to answer that.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, you're not answering that question?
I'm not answering that question.
Okay, no further questions.
You okay with that?
I, actually, uh, so as, as her advisor, obviously, Robin Elwood adheres to all legal laws in regards to gambling.
Yes, yes.
So, uh, exactly as she can clearly state herself as well, so anything. Yes, yes, so anything in regards to any sort of backroom deals or, uh, or anything like that.
Gambling is to be enjoyed responsibly.
That is not a, that is not a very.
Just don't lose thirty-five thousand dollars.
What?
Sorry.
Uh.
That's a very specific number.
Please disregard that. No, she is not indebted, she's not dead to anyone.
Tommy, just, just sit down, just take her to sit down.
No, no.
Why are none of the other council members disavow murder?
Oh, would you say that you gamble responsibly?
Yes.
Would, would you say losing thirty-five thousand dollars is a responsible amount? Well, that's.
It depends how much you're putting down.
That's all the payments anyways. So let's just move this forward, um. Is there any other statements as far as your platform that you'd like to make before the council?
Yes.
Alright, go ahead. Uh, Robin, go ahead.
Oh, you ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, we're ready, you didn't present your. I'm sorry, are you baying at us?
What, what?
I'm clearing my throat, forgive me.
Sorry, I thought you were making a statement about like your animal suffering.
Powerful confidence, I'm confident, I'm powerful, I'm gonna win this election. I'm gonna win. It's gonna make some, some powerful people very unhappy.
Who, who, who exactly? Yeah, go ahead and say names that you think will make them unhappy.
That's the end of my statement.
If you were confident, I think you'd say names, interesting.
Uh, at this time, at this time, uh, future councilwoman, Robin Elwood has no further comments, thank you, councilman.
Thank you, you're very handsome, sir, thank you.
Alright, uh, at this time, the, uh, is there any more?
Hold on.
Oh.
Nice job, that was awesome. Great job. That was very inspiring, I think I learned so much from you today.
Your platform?
I've got the best FTO in the entire department right here.
Or maybe you don't wanna say anything.
My name is Robert Daynop, sorry about that, I was whispering. I was trying to give myself some self-confidence cuz I'm a little shy, um, but, uh. Yeah, I wanna, I wanna, uh, second what, uh, a lot of the citizens are saying about Robin Elwood. I know that she has talked about the running for council and chickened out every time, but I think not only is it a great point that she's on the police department. And that's, uh, vital to have their say in this council chamber. Uh, but she's also a woman and brings that, uh, keeps that fresh perspective in here. Um, am I correct in hearing that there are two seats open?
That is correct, there's two seats open.
In that case, I would also like to throw my hat in to be considered for a position as councilman. Uh, I believe that, uh, as someone who is with the business bureau and with the changes coming along with the, uh, the systems in the city. There's gonna be a lot of questions and a lot of questions get answered here in these chambers. And having someone from the BBB, uh, sitting as a councilman would probably be a great asset. Um, as far as any legislation, the, one of the first things I wanna present is the, uh, a government instituted, uh. Funded, uh, welcome wagon, uh, to try to get to the people who are just coming in the city. Uh, to help their transition into the city, uh, go a little smoother. I still remember what my first week and a half was in this city and I still have scars from it. I believe that the easier the transition into the city and, uh, and the, uh, more comfortable they are with the big city. Those people are gonna freak out and fly back home to their small towns.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, alright, well, does, uh, the council have any questions for this man? Alright.
Thank you.
Yes, hello, ca- uh, campaign advisor for Robin Elwood, Thomas DeAngelo again, I'd just like to address the, uh, the crowd if I could.
Yeah.
Sure, why not, for your candidate, for your candidate, right?
Yes, of course, of course.
Okay.
Of course, thank you. Uh, just ladies and gentlemen, I would just like to make you all aware, if you didn't know this already, Robin Elwood has literally. Walked and, and wandered and worked in these hallowed halls of city hall, long before literally any other person in this entire building.
Amen.
She is the keeper of the hall in city hall. She held many a title, she, she kept business in order, she kept things from just going chaotically and people stabbing each other and. And blood and feces being thrown about the entire fucking city hall. She, she worked in city hall before this building even existed. And, and she'll do the goddamn same once she's elected into city hall, or, or sorry, city council, city council. She will wander these hallowed halls and make sure that your voice, that each and every one of you goddamn people in here and all those people out there is heard. Because Elwood, El could, and El should. Nineteen eighty-six, city councilwoman.
I, I have a question.
Good job, Robin.
Woo!
I will be taking, I will be taking no questions.
Thank you. Worked really hard on that speech.
Uh, so, let's, uh, is that all the people putting their names for, for city council? Alright, uh, at this time, the council would like to deliberate for a second to discuss the seats. Could give us, uh, say probably less than five minutes. Alright.
What was it?
I thought it's an election, why are they choosing?
Alright, councilman?
No idea.
Alright, moving?
Yes, I'm gonna deliberate over here.
You, you got this in bag, Robin, you got this in bag.
Yes.
Oh, tabs.
Uh, yes, sir, ma'am.
Yeah, this is, reminds me of the parachute conversation.
I think this is bad, you should've seen the crocodiles in the bathtub one.
Crocodiles in the bathtub? Like baby ones or full-sized ones?
Um, any crocodile, I think, for that.
Baby ones are kinda cute, though.
Yeah. Oh, what?
What?
But yeah, the, the whole, the whole alligator in the bathtub.
That's impolite.
The whole alligator in the bathtub devolved into front of the kitchen somehow.
Telling tales outside of school.
Oh, Casey remembered to give you money from Boblin. After this, this is an ATM at city hall, so we can't, you know, forget to give ya.
Just ask from the stand.
You're welcome.
I know he didn't break my leg for you to not get paid.
Yeah.
Call him out in front of everybody.
Uh-huh.
He ran me over, punched me, knocked me down with a bicycle.
Oh my god!
Oh, jeez!
And he's telling everybody that you attempted to murder him, Roxy.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe he shouldn't climb up on top of a helicopter, right?
You having flashbacks, Tab?
We're having a hard time sitting down.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Okay, do you, do you know the best muscle to use to sit down? Uh, not sure, no, but I'd be happy to hear it. Here, come back here with me.
Oh, there was a pigeon in my house today.
In your house?
Yeah, upstairs somehow.
Oh.
Yeah. And I, I brought Seymour out for him to play with. Oh, no, they're, they're friends, no, they're friends.
The pigeon wasn't even moving away from him.
They're friends.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, I watched him for over an hour.
Yeah, Seymour was like hugging him with his mouth?
I'm glad to hear that Seymour's doing okay.
He's doing his best.
Now, if you do, before you, you sit down, if you choose it, or when you choose it, and you feel your brain to choose a direction, it's at the top right of your eyeball, you'll see a little. Four-way direction. Oh, no, that was strange, sorry. Sorry. Sorry.
Yeah.
Well, it's not like, it's not, yeah, I was like, it's not when you lay. I would, I would suggest that you, you just do what you can, um, as, uh, as of, as, as far as I know, um. Everything is being concentrated on this new system. It's gonna be a whole new system coming to the city. Yeah, but it's just a lot that has to happen and it's, uh, totally different than what it is now. But it, it, uh, yeah, it's, it's gonna be, in the long run, it's gonna be good for the city, we just have to be prepared. I mean, I don't, don't take this as, as like, that's the stance, that's just a suggestion, please, please feel free to talk the tale, but to kinda put it like. Look, I know you got a lot on your plate and you would rather I wait than.
So are they deciding who's gonna be on the council?
No, they get ice cream halfway through the meeting every week.
What?
Yeah, they're off getting ice cream right now.
Where's our ice cream?
Oh, we're, we're not on the council. Expected you to get up there, Pete.
I, I'm not even gonna lie, I thought about it.
You're on a roll. When they come back in, go up and announce that you're running. You came in second, Pete. That's, you know. Well, you did great, sounds like.
Well, you won a house yesterday, so.
Yep. Just draw a detailed picture.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, Billy Falco is, uh, filibustering, so please hold.
Oh my god!
I think it's a candy bar.
Wrap it up!
Pinch Falco!
I can get by that.
Somebody get him out of the stall.
They have that motion?
Wait, that's a fake.
Mine, uh, Benjamin Riggs, uh, longtime friend of Miss, or Officer Elwood.
Oh my god.
Oh, yeah.
Oh my god.
Oh.
He, he, he doesn't.
But you gotta also inform that woman, then if she tries to step foot in that plane, she might just end up dead cuz he sucks at flying.
Wait, somebody's named Woodcock? Sorry, I didn't mean to eavesdrop, did you say somebody has a name Woodcock?
He doesn't remember, he remembers taking you.
Yes.
A, a preacher, you say?
Hey, Robin, I, I just want you to know that, uh, that, uh.
Oh, can I interrupt, does anyone have a burger? I've been starving.
I've been starving for the last tip.
I'll give you one guess.
Tabs, what are you doing after this?
Yeah.
Good luck to you.
Yeah.
Me fucking do.
You shouldn't eat a burger.
Are you sleepy?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I get that.
God, that's a, that's a great idea. I like that.
No, I just have a burger.
Yeah, I need to go to bed soon. Y'all need
Robin, this is your chance.
When I eat this burger, it's gonna look weird.
Just, just start the meeting. Just assume your chair.
This is your chance, go be mayor.
Oh my goodness. Oh, I amazing.
Oh, fucking, my client.
Oh.
Shit.
Great job, Robin.
Oh.
Women!
Hmm.
Well, I have not paid attention.
I for one support what she's doing.
I never paid attention to these things.
Oh, wow, she's
Oh, she powers stance him.
I, I know.
Cause she's power stanceing. That's the best way to stand.
You have something to say, candidate, Robin Elwood?
No, I'm just standing here.
She's standing on her ground.
Stand your ground, alright, very well. Hold on.
Yep.
Uh, so after careful deliberation and, uh, a lot of discussion, the council has decided on the two remaining seats to be filled by, no, they're not filibustering anything. Um, the seats are gonna be filled by, uh, Mr. Daynab and Mrs. Elwood.
Woo! Robin!
Take your seat. Um, the
Wonderful. Congratulations.
The file cabinets will be open to you after the meeting. After the meeting, definitely take a look at the bills that are presented, cause we have two subjects to go over next week.
Oh, god.
Congratulations, uh, and welcome to the council.
Wait.
And with that note, um, I would like to open up the floor to any public that have any questions on any subjects of the city hall in the city. If not, we, I would like to move to adjourn. Uh, and we have a question already. Alright, go ahead.
Yes, what is your question, sir?
Please.
Wait, we can't hear you.
Please free us from this existence.
It's almost been two hours.
Apollo!
Please.
For the love of all the to- okay, yes, what's your question, sir?
The, the Sandy Shore's commercial and, 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 and directive, is that being, gonna be discussed tonight or later at a, a later event? If it's later, it's fine.
Yeah, we tabled it to next meeting, so we're gonna be discussing with the public at the next meeting.
Thank you for clarification, thank you.
And if you don't bring us to, bring us to course and put us, and tell, remind us.
Hello, sir, what's your name?
Uh, hello.
I will have an open, I will have an open meeting at the mall sometime during next week. There will be posted flyers twenty-four hours in advance.
Hello, who, who are you, sir?
Hello, I am current, uh, campaign advisor to Robin Elwood, now elected. Yes, so now elected, uh, councilwoman. Uh, this is just me formally renouncing my role as campaign advisor. Uh, also, I wanna officially note just for the, for the, uh, the court, I guess this is a court, for the, uh, the council today, that I am now two-for-two on, uh, advising, uh, elect, what would be the, uh,
Electees.
Electees, that's what I'm looking for. Two-for-two. Uh, so anyone in the future wanting to pay for my services as a campaign advisor, this goes to anyone, anyone in the room at all that wants to be elected, you know where to contact me. Thomas D'Angelo, the best campaign advisor in the state of San Andreas. Thank you, that is all.
Preach!
Mr. D'Angelo, I would like to congratulate you.
Thank you.
And, uh, what, are you going to request that you be instated as chief of staff currently, right now?
Uh, definitely not, definitely not. Uh, that is up to, uh, councilwoman Elwood, if, uh, she wants to have a cabinet for a goddamn city council role. I don't know if that would be necessary as such, but if she were to want a cabinet, maybe a chief of, chief of staff, secretary of defense. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, uh, I'm from Liberty City, I swear a lot. Uh, if she wants to have a chief of staff, a secretary of defense, a secretary of the homeland, uh, secretary of agriculture, secretary treasury, treasurer.
If you wanted to be my, if that, that, that would be on my level, but that's fine. Um, if you don't wanna ask for that, that's fine.
No, my god, no, I'm too busy. Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask this man a question. I'd like to ask this man a question.
Uh, if, it's up to him.
I will hear out the question.
Uh, who's your favorite counselor?
Um, this is, uh, can I split my answer to two people?
No.
Alright, uh, my son, my son, my son, uh, well, not legally binding in any way, nor biologically, uh, in any way, my son. Boblin King is my favorite council member, followed closely by Robin Elwood, who is now probably the, the best counselor on this floor.
Okay, thank you.
Hear that? Hear the other councilman?
There's a lot of ask hits going on, isn't there?
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else in the public?
Excuse me, pardon me. Excuse me, sorry. Excuse me, pardon me.
Anyone else from the council have a statement? No. Meeting is adjourned. Oh, you do? Uh, you, wait, wait, your council, alright.
What? Billy, are you saying something? I will come down upon you.
Come down. Uh, ma'am, c- council.
Hello, members of the public.
Oh, god!
I'd like to thank you all for electing me to office and I love you so much.
Oh.
Robin, 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 sit down, Robin.
Robin.
Oh no, she's gonna
Off, off the table.
Not a, not a court.
Off the table, not, not a courtroom. You wanna address, you can address from here for now, but usually at the podium. Go ahead, I'll let it slide, it's your first time.
Hello, crowd, it feels really weird to talk to you with my back turned, but, uh,
You're speaking to us, that's why.
Get used to it.
I'd like to thank you all, crowd, for having faith in me and, uh, pressuring me into putting myself forward for this position. I won't let you down, or maybe I will. I guess, uh, we'll see.
Love you, Robin. Do great.
Good job, Robin!
Are you trying to, uh, bribe the people with kisses? Oh, dear god.
Alright.
Fucking chair.
Alright, fair, fair. Alright, if there's another question
What's in, what's in, what's in the thing?
I don't know.
Oh.
I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
There, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
Will I be getting my winnings? Yes, right after this. Will I be getting double for the five years that I was a lady? Uh, no, because, uh, Moxie almost murdered me with the helicopter, so that's why you didn't get your winnings.
Is he calling her Moxie?
Give them two.
Oh.
Alright, if this is, if, if this is about the game show, we, we're not discussing that.
There's no current game show questions, not accepting autographs, sorry.
Yes, yeah. Is your question to the council or is it about the, can you speak up?
Yes, yes. I just wanted to say that, uh, to, for all of y'all and everyone here, I just hope everyone wasn't too alarmed by all the meteor flyers. I am the, the owner of a new newspaper that's coming out, the Los Santos Meteor, and I just, uh, wanted to say, uh, um, hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Cynthia, you're the media, media lady?
Yes.
I thought we were gonna get blown up today.
Yes.
It could still happen.
Don't worry, you'll die a little dead.
Um, I, I have, I have drinks drunk, as lo- as long, uh, as well as other drinks. I mean, I'm very open to, um, you know, advertising. Oh gosh, I have that song, Pete, Pete sings that song all the time.
That's you, Pete.
In the shower. Okay, thank you.
You're the Bumblebee tuna guy.
Bumblebee tuna.
Can we, can we, okay, alright, nice, we can leave, thank god.
We did a
See, if you became a council member, you could have changed it so before everybody leaves, we had to sing the Bumblebee tuna song.
Yes, okay.
Congratulations, everybody, we made it through another week.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, maybe next time.
Yeah, give, give it a couple weeks.
Where'd the tabs go?
Either an election or
I'm so tired.
Tabs? Oh.
Just gonna wet under the, okay. Are you going to bed or I, I, I wanna buy the car?
I'm not entirely, I'm not entirely sure, but I was just kinda rattling drove me here, so I'm, I'm kind of just, uh, at the city hall. Or what, what's going on?
Oh, I wanted to purchase that car.
Oh, right, 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 of course, of course. I suppose I could head my, I'll tell you what, can I meet you there and say, I'd like, uh, oh, where are you talking to who?
Billy, you wanna purchase the Terrismo for seventy thousand dollars?
No, I can't afford that.
No, perfect. I mean, not that you can't afford it, it's about going to, just, like you're coming
I'll give you fifteen thousand.